This conference will now be recorded.
Alright, so work session to order. I'm gonna share my screen on this, that way it's recorded. Everybody should be able to see it.
Giant, giant circle things, those are trees.
So we wanna, Ricky, do we wanna talk about the progress? I mean, it's recorded, so people can watch it.
Um, yeah, I mean, I could wait a little longer, you think, Ricky, and some of the other trustees are coming?
Yes.
Rusty, we need to...
Laura's gonna be here.
Laura said she was gonna be somewhere else, she's not town or something today.
Really?
Oh, right, she said she was enjoying online, right?
Well, she posted that it'd be online, though.
Yeah.
Well, yes, so I guess I can talk about it real quick, if you guys don't mind.
Go for it.
Sorry, James, taking up some time.
I left early, so.
Okay.
We're lined up.
So last week, um, myself, a few of our board members from the land bank, and then Ron, Mary, Fran, we all went up to O'Meara to see some of Providence housing's projects that are located there. Um, and to kind of talk more about their interest in Temple and Liberty Street here and develop those will be going for potential projects. Um, and I think it went, it went really well, I was happy with the discussion, you know, between our board members and between the village trustees here. Um, and they're, they're thinking somewhere about twelve units for the project. And make sure, um, duplexes and duplexes to get to the twelve units. And right now, where they're at is, um, they'd like to get site control before they continue investing any more soft costs in the project in terms of developing a site plan and all of that.
What does site control mean?
Um, it means they wanna have a, a purchase agreement or an option to purchase agreement.
With the county?
With the land bank, yep. Um, and so my board asked me to come here today just to kind of get a sense of you all, how you felt about the site visit, and you feel like this project is gonna be a good fit for that area in terms of character and the number of units and, and the style of the housing. Um, so that our board can kind of feel comfortable with going down this path. We wanna have, you know, open line of communication with you all, and we don't wanna wind up in the same boat and kind of a year, year and a half down the road like we did in IHS. Um, so I don't know, Ron or Fran or Mary, if you guys wanna jump in and talk about what you saw?
According to what we're told, I think it would be a nice step, but of course, until we see a blueprint, I mean, that could be a totally different lady. But I like the idea that you wanna stay true to the architecture of the village and like the smaller dwellings with two or three units. And I'm only assuming, I don't know, presuming that the ADA homes would be a single level?
Yeah, I would assume.
I would imagine they would have to be.
The ones they, have you seen the ones they kind of got up at Leo Gardens, too?
Uh, actually, I, I don't know if they would.
Alright, but those are single levels, are they?
Okay, I had a feeling for the ADA, they would have to be, but you need a elevator or something.
Okay, yeah.
So I have twelve units, I mean, you're talking a couple apartments and some of them are, what? We had six two-unit, like duplexes and two triplexes, I think, were sitting there.
Yeah, or three, three to two units, or two or three.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
It's gonna be separate ADA standard. I would imagine somebody would achieve or something like that.
Get somebody to do like an artist rendering?
I, yeah, they'll definitely...
Like blend in with the, what we have now, 'cause I think with the visuals, people can visualize it better.
I think you're gonna build a lot of work there.
Oh.
Is, is he looking at just Liberty Street?
So...
I mean, Temple, that's lots there, really.
The lots are a little more challenging, I think, when they get down in, yeah. And so, they haven't really spent the money yet, I mean, so as soon as they get site controlled, then they'll take the next step, hire an architect or an engineer to do a more official site plan and to figure out how the, how the structures can be laid out on the site, and, and they'll do renderings and sure.
Yeah, was a property on the west side of Liberty, too, wasn't there?
Yes, we have a couple of lots on each side of it.
I thought so, 'cause I know he, didn't seem like he wanted to buy all of the lots.
Yeah.
He was just looking for select.
He thought they might be, um, moved to, maybe they won't use all the lots.
Right.
Um, and even, this is just throwing this out there, down the road, they have a school district, even, you guys know that rehabbing the house on Liberty. They even talked about being, and maybe the lot right next to it, and building a home next to it, they're students. So I think if they don't use all the lots, there's a possibility of you doing it, too.
Doesn't Steve Jackson got a house like right there?
He is the guy who's like, sure.
He's the next block up on Temple, or Liberty.
On Liberty, yeah.
Yeah.
He's at the walkway section.
I mean, I did like that he was committed to not building in the mall, 'cause that's always a flood concern and... Like, in my opinion, he had all the questions we had of what we would require.
Okay.
Now, that's my opinion, I've talked to Rusty, he had a slight difference of opinion, but I told him, this is nothing I wouldn't want in my street, the way it was described to me, and I have no problem with it on my street. I got some houses I'll tear down for you.
I think, just so you know, for your comfort, too, one, we're gonna make board meets on Wednesday, and we're gonna talk about the option agreement and all that, but one contingency that I would like to see, but obviously, if the board decision is that, you know, the board gets to review and approve the final. It's like things, obviously, we don't have that yet, it's all people.
I mean, I know ultimately, it's zoned properly, we honestly have very little input, I mean, any zoning variances, but I do like the transparency and inclusion.
And I mean, we get, well, we don't get a full planning, we get site plan review.
Right, right, well, we have safety nets in place.
Yeah.
Well, I was impressed with the maintenance of their older building there.
Me, too.
And, um, I, I don't remember the gentleman's name.
Mark.
Mark?
Yes.
Uh, he seemed to be very open in answering our questions, he wasn't put off by anything we asked. Um, I, the one thing, he, he's not planning any off-street parking. And I, I think that's very important, now. I, I don't know if the land bank could sell the village, you know, a lot there on, um, Temple.
Yeah.
And maybe we could get some grant money to, to pave a, a parking lot there, or even just gravel, whatever. 'Cause it's not a good idea to have all those cars parked on the street.
Yeah, I think even just with you guys' zoning code, it was gonna have to, and my, and Link, our plan George waited on that, too, she thinks there's really gonna have to be some kind of parking plan. He was talking about trying to save costs with the project, if that would be allowable, but I think when we get into the design, the engineers will probably pick up on that, too.
Really is, especially with the ADA homes, chances are they will not have your vehicle.
Right.
They will be picked up, be a van or something, but twenty years down the road, and to say those houses still sell, now we have to have parking.
Right.
Yeah, parking would be of some form, but like you said, the zoning, I guess like one space per unit or something like that. It doesn't sound...
Yeah. But if, if we're renting to, not we, if, if they are renting to, to, you know, young families with a husband and wife both working, you got these two vehicles in the household. So, I mean...
We will be adding some parking blocks away.
Parking open and...
People won't walk that far from the street.
No, they won't walk that far. Yeah, they would come to our car wash there.
But, yeah, me, the way I'm having the conversation with him, I'm gone for it. I mean, I love the idea of the twelve units instead of the fifty, it's a much smaller footprint.
Yeah.
I think that should make a lot of our residents way more comfortable with the flooding issue over there.
Okay.
That is the one thing that always pops up on my radar, is we were told not to put people at risk in an at-risk area, but we keep wanting to put at-risk people in the at-risk area. It just seems like a hypocrisy, I guess. I mean, I understand we limited our space, but that is one of the things that does pop up to me.
Well, any, any area in the village is gonna flood, except the few, you know, the acreage, right?
Very much.
Anything along rural tracks, it's like, everything else floods.
I mean, I worry if people with disabilities, the house flooded, it was a nightmare to get them out of there safely, 'cause their structure is gone, and it is definitely a chore. But I'm sure people with much higher education than me with that will be preemptive.
Yeah, I assume it would be like, with those types of people, at least with the programs that they were talking about, it'd be more like working with the nursing home, if it's coming, you know, we move all those people.
Oh.
So it's not...
'Cause it's, or people who are borderline independent, I mean, that's the way I took it.
Yeah, I mean, I think it, really, Mark really wanted to hear from you all, you know, if you're more interested in workforce housing, maybe they'll be more, I don't know, eight minutes workforce housing, maybe a whole new vehicle. So I think that's maybe you all the way in on, too, is, I mean, generally, I think you guys kind of gave park that impression, but I can reiterate that with him, that you think workforce housing would be appreciated there?
I think we definitely have a need for what he wants to put there.
Okay.
It's an unfortunate thing, we're always gonna have people without and people with disabilities, so we need to take care of them. But we do have a bunch of vacant lots where workforce housing would be nice to bring in some families and somebody who would contribute to the society, I guess, to invest in it for it.
Wouldn't kind of change the dynamic of that neighborhood.
Right.
'Cause we took it down, whatever, so it'd be nice to bring in families, especially with a new park going a block away.
Right.
Yeah. I think this is a step in the right direction, at least from my opinion.
Yeah, no, I was positively impressed.
I would, I couldn't believe that building that was almost twenty years old looked the same as the one that was brand new.
So probably, there we saw a building on one side of the street that was seventeen years old, and a building on the other side of the street that was two years old. And when you walked in, you couldn't really tell the difference. The seventeen-year-old one was maintained, and it looked like a two-year-old.
And they, they put money into a capital fund every year for repair costs that the diocese will cover, and, you know, I did like that side of it, too, that it's not, it's not your typical sectioning housing, where the government builds it and kind of walks away.
That's what's nice, there's inclusion involved in it.
It's run by the Catholic Church of New York State.
Uh, Rochester, Rochester.
Rochester, whatever.
The dioceses are...
So Providence Housing is affiliated with the Catholic, or the Rochester Catholic Diocese. They are a separate organization, just to be fair, it's their separate nonprofit.
Right.
Um, all of their funds, they don't get special, uh, for the site allocations from the Catholic Church at all.
Okay.
Um, so they are, they stand on their own, but they're affiliated with them and, and the Catholic charity as well.
And it may sound as though they're accountable to the diocese.
I think, yeah, not, not financially, the diocese, yes, they're gonna do it that way.
Right, no, but I mean, as far as responsibility, like the diocese will oversee, uh, should you be doing this? So there's that also, that extra level of caution.
Was very, it's very well managed anyway, the two, two buildings that we saw were, I mean...
Yeah, he did say there would be an onsite management.
Yeah, they're very well kept, the apartments are nice.
Sound like out-of-town management.
And this is small, though, they're not putting a huge burden on our school district, 'cause there's not gonna be a lot of young people that didn't see.
Well, and it's only twelve units, which is probably about what we took out of there, right?
It's not, it's close, yeah. It may be the whole lots, honestly, 'cause some of those bigger buildings had four or five units in them, so... That would probably be comparable, it's a good way to put it, but managed, well, they started, yeah.
Managed, yes.
Right. It's, it's gonna be slightly smaller progress than what we took out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Which is good.
Will, will there still be lots available to develop?
I think it's gonna depend on what they come up with in their site plan. Um, he didn't seem to think that they were gonna need all of the properties to be private, so there may be...
Yeah, maybe lots, or there may be a spot where, I mean, that street is tough on parking. Maybe if there is an empty lot, we could make a parking lot, and then do no parking down the street here, 'cause it is the narrowest two-way street in the village.
Yeah, it's straight.
If your driver's tested it, we go, let's redo your cake here.
That's true.
Okay.
You can almost not do it there.
Yeah. So...
No, I wanna see that whole area developed, you know? That's my biggest point of view, and I, I guess that I'm very well impressed with Mark's piece.
I think...
Straightforward.
I get the impression, too, that he wants to, indeed, to communicate the design process, and so I think we'll be coming back. You guys, but he also wants to set up community meetings where they do have their plans all...
So he asked that question, he was, I'm not gonna waste that time till I get some work from the village, which makes sense.
Yeah, no, he seemed to be good.
As long as he stays true to what he led us to believe, I'm supportive of him.
And what you said, some of the, I would like to have it next to my...
No, I think it would blend right in the way it was designed.
That is, I mean, being part well managed, and with people with disability living on Front Street, you never know when to look at the house.
Right.
It's a beautiful house. And effort, I'll do our village.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dave, I think the board's gonna meet Wednesday and talk about it. Um, and they're, you know, they'll go ahead and report on things, so I'll be sure to come back, keep you guys updated, and...
Yeah.
Whenever you guys...
Not too bad, the three board members aren't here.
Yeah, the old man talking to them isn't here.
Right.
I'm not going to stay to them, but he will know all of the details.
Right. So if you, if, I guess you're gonna let me know if you want me to come back and talk about another time, that's fine, I can do that.
We'll see how Wednesday goes.
Okay.
That sounds good.
But it's only gonna get at least four of us.
Are you getting out of putting your child in bed?
I am.
You wanna stay a little longer?
I'm gonna stay a little longer, but anyway, thank you, guys.
We won't tell Tom, but this report.
Yeah. I know.
I can wait like a little after, on YouTube.
But he's not an officer anymore, so I'm slightly less intimidated.
Yeah.
He is still three feet deep.
Oh, he's like a really good dad.
Hey, James, how are you?
I mean, well, ultimately, we just really need to pinch out these last couple decisions once went or another, you know?
We put this one off last time, 'cause we didn't have everybody here, and we still have more.
Yeah, I mean, like I said before, I could easily make a very strong argument for all of the alternatives we have on the table. It really comes down to one, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that pavilion, I'd love to see it, but I think it'd be much cheaper to build after we're done with the prevailing wage, when we do it on their own, then you probably don't have that cost.
We need to ask them that.
We can just see if we need it, or if it's used, or, you know?
Right.
No, the only thing I see, um, is the performing arts area. I would see that move back more towards where the parking areas are there, parking spaces. There's, uh, well, it would be more convenient site-wise, I think, for the terrace area along the bank, but also, um, for things that would be going on, and the stage area could go to the parking areas very easily. I mean, I see it as, you know, like, uh...
Yeah, this, this, that's really rough in there, we will try to be, you know, conscious of that. It'll be relatively centered, probably a little bit closer to the parking area on your side, like you talked about.
Yeah.
So I guess, do we wanna do like, uh, like, so we don't wanna do a pavilion, but do we wanna do like a pad? Like, if we're doing a Draper Farm with power or something?
I would, I would like to see a roof over it.
Well, that's the hard thing, eventually, I would love to have that, but I think we can do it for a fraction of the cost we don't have to abide by the DRI grant requirements, because it, prevailing wage is gonna kill us. We, like James said, we could probably do it for a fraction of what the hundred thousand dollar debt is up here.
Yeah. Well, I would like to see power and light there, you know, the performing area.
Well, the good thing is, if you do, if you go the route that the mayor has suggested currently, you could easily run power to that pad, and then if you put a pavilion up and install lights, wherever that power's installed, you just carry it right through. We'll just make a...
So we can do the rest of it afterwards, maybe say...
Anyway, to get like a foundation of where a pavilion would be, and...
So, so yes and no.
If you know, we do want to go with that, and you can put like a tent up whenever you want to.
I would recommend, so I wouldn't recommend installing the foundation. You can, you can definitely do like a pad of some sort that is gonna be a clean surface, 'cause if you do a simple or stick, stick-built type structure, like you're talking about, just very simple roof, they're just gonna figure out sonitudes, they're gonna want, someone's gonna wanna go out there, core drill it, drop the sonitudes in, and go on.
I'm talking like four points.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Four corners, and you could just put the tent holes in, you know, it'll be, it'll be more solid, but not permanent. You can take it down, it'll be open air, and if you want to...
You're saying almost like anchor points to do, uh, like a, uh, tear-down setup type structure?
Yeah.
I was gonna say, I've never seen anything like that, it's very possible, like people...
Most creative, Laura.
Doesn't seem too hard to, it's more of a scaled-down version of a pavilion, I mean, it's not permanent, but when you need one, you can set it up, it's like that, and it's there.
I mean, that, respond to that, like, you can put a tent up anywhere.
Well, that's a tent, I'm talking about, the foundation for it will be permanent, and we can set it up, that'll be, it'll be easy to set it up.
Kind of like it's gymnasia, when you put up the volleyball net, you pull it out when you're done.
Yeah.
I mean, the good thing is, for something like that, that's temporary, you don't really need a true foundation.
Right, exactly.
Like, I mean, all you really need is a couple anchor points on a slab.
Right, and then with that, with all that grass area, I look at that, and all I see is mud. That's what I really see.
Well, ideally...
So if there's like, like a pathway through, I don't know, make it, make a peace sign. Make a, yeah, well, well, yeah, but in the middle, make a peace sign, a pathway to walk through or something.
So that's part of the, um, that's part of the idea with leaving that, is that'll give us a canvas for artistic expression.
But that's all grass, right?
Yeah.
I see mud, that's what I see. But if you have like, like a pathway leading from each of the circle, like a peace sign, that's art, huh?
Yeah, no, I, I agree, the, um, the intent for that will be to have some storm control facilities, so... So like, also that water will drain away, or even, it should either be relatively dry or flooded, like, really your only options.
The flood part, yeah, flood, grass, flood, all I see is mud.
We're not gonna prevent this place from getting flooded.
Oh, that's...
All we're gonna do is try to manage the water and make sure that it's not gonna drain quickly.
Right.
Yeah. Well, with a pathway in, in there, I mean, it could, it's less than soaking.
So, but you're talking about like a...
I mean, it would, it would be like, yeah, I mean, to, to, to match the outside rain, just continue it where it's a pattern. I mean, I can see it visually, but maybe you can't, I mean, you got the old there, you know what a peace sign looks like?
Like a Y inside?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's a, and that's another pathway, you don't have to cross, across the grass to get to the other side, you can take that path. Those that wanna walk around can walk around. And along that path, you could set up, they could look at art, I mean, it's just not permanent art, it's just set up. Or you could have booths, you have a lot of things, so.
I know, we were considering like farmer's market.
Yeah, and then if you set up along, and you already got the path there, you don't have to walk in the mud.
No, I mean, I envision a lot of different activities, you know, the police department, the fire department, EMS, they have, uh, programs in the summer for the kids, I mean, they could have it there in the park area. We could have Easter egg hunts in the spring, um, strawberry festival, like, give it here. A lot of, a lot of things that park can be used for.
So I think we want some kind of pad in the middle there.
Yeah.
With power.
Do we want it in the middle?
Well, or somewhere in the, in the green, somewhere in the...
As long as we're, um, content with the idea, you know, a pad with some potential pathway to or from it, that's something we can progress, and we can have some, talk about how that's gonna change or whatever as we get the, the final drawings progress. Um, my main goal is, I need, I need a kind of a structure so that as I'm going, it's, you, you start to like add little things, add little things, and the budget balloons very quickly, um...
Yeah, one of the red circles.
Uh, those currently are small, like podiums for potential artwork to be displayed.
Now, we didn't even talk about these pathways, right, 'cause we, we talked about stairs and ramps and...
Front and the back, right, you're like...
Well, so one thing that Jer had pointed out, we had talked about some of these things recently, is that those paths, um, do also offer north and south ADA access, without having to go down to the, I mean, my thought is, if you're, I mean, if you're looking for handicap access, you're probably gonna go down there anyway and park there, but if you happen to be up there and you wanna get down, that's what the path provides, and then also someone for the stroller.
Well, I guess it's, it's handicap access for people walking to the park, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah, made like a ramp.
Much as, you know, do we need this ramp, or could the handicappers are walking, walk down this driveway here? 'Cause if this one here is not that steep, but I don't know if it meets...
North Avenue.
Regulation.
Right, regulation's what?
You're gonna have some...
It doesn't meet regulation, but you don't need to provide, since it's an outdoor space, you don't need to provide every surface to be two percent accessible, you only have to provide a single path. So even, even with just having the parking and then like one of those ramps in, that's considered valid access to the area. I had something similar in my last DRI project, where the whole site was like sloped at like four percent, and I'm like, well, I can reduce it to two percent across the entire site, then I'm gonna have a big mound at the end of this street, that's pretty high. So, but so we ended up kind of like creating a path through the middle that like zigzagged and tapered off, so there's like one high point that kind of has a set down or a drop-off, but the rest of it is relatively arch, concrete, guys hate that. It's not easy to, to finish.
So I guess, do we want two ramps, do we want one ramp, so a set of stairs is very expensive, we figured it out.
Well, one is adequate, I would, I would go with one, and that way, you would have that area to do other things in, too, you know, uh, some sort of like play area for the kids, I'm not talking about playground equipment, but, you know, like maybe a big soup, I would, I would think it's people, the kids...
Well, yeah, I mean, you can let your...
Play on and play on.
You can let your arts committee take advantage of that, like little, there's lots of like play garden type things that are in that are not easily maintained, they, they come out, they go away, they regrow. Ultimately, that's, you'd really like that committee to kind of take ownership of this after that, you guys don't have the, the staff and the mess on top of everything else, from what I understand.
Especially if this is not a super steep hill.
Yeah.
But also, if this is not a super steep hill, I mean, this part in the middle we're looking at is not that big. It's like, it's less than the size of this broom, roughly.
Yeah, I think you'd be surprised that they actually scale like this, once you get it. And that's the thing about these artistic kind of renderings, they're really hard to go feel for. Like, when you, when we put this on a real engineering drawing and start having dimensions and everything on there, all of a sudden, you might, you might go like, wow, that looks a lot more like sand and spaced out, or like, wow, everything's like really congested. I mean, they try to do their best on scale, but again, that, that sidewalk, I don't even think you'd have to get even, like, you wouldn't even really be able to tell. I assume that it's probably closer to six, but...
The yellow area, is that where water drainage would be?
That's, that's a sidewalk.
No, it's just a sidewalk, all of our drainage structures ideally will be underground. So we'll, we'll test the soil and everything and make sure that there's proper infiltration, how long it takes, we'll measure that. And then what we'll do is the storm system will, um, design it to accept the channeling with gravel and underground systems to let the water infiltrate, or at least let it rise at a steady rate.
Yeah, well, I was thinking of like over at the elementary, they have those gravel areas where the water can, you know, settle into.
Yeah, that's essentially what we'll do, but you can, you can put those things, you know, four or five feet underground, add, you know, two or three feet of gravel, like you, you use big, big heavy gravel, and then you put a few feet of soil on top of it. The grass, um, gets established and holds it all together, so you don't really get mud. And since you have all that impad capacity underneath it, when the water drains, the water will drain, so the top of it actually, unless it fills all the way up, that top surface is never really lab.
Okay.
That's my, that's my intent currently, without, without putting numbers to calculate it, yeah.
This portion here is the, the layout swap, the swap with the L.I., or the steamer house.
Yeah, luckily, that's not really gonna change any of our design, I think we'll just...
Other than in the design, the rainbow shows this kind of sidewalk here with the parking lot, right, there's gonna be a driveway coming out here.
Yeah, we'll just kind of show that, so we can tell on their, their roof or whatever. Are you guys, so, do we want to, like, is there a fence that we're, do you guys wanna put a fence up?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's something that we, yeah, that's a non-negotiable, but it's an industrial one.
That, that's what I, that's what I kind of assumed. That, that's what I, that's what I kind of assumed, and I mean, and that's not exactly a, a super long length or anything, so putting up a fence isn't gonna break our budget.
I don't remember who was supposed to put the fence up.
Yeah, I would think that commercial business would do the fencing.
Then I don't remember if that was part of it.
We'll check in it, cause it would be nice if they might be willing to just throw money at us to do this part of this project, cause if they put it up, you're gonna get some monthly chain rate, whatever.
Yeah, we want some kind of like a.
Yeah, we want it to certain height and.
Yeah, but it, so, what I found is what they'll do is what you're gonna cover with, and if, if your screening requirements accept things like fabric, that's, that kinda stuff, they'll, they'll, whatever's cheapest.
Anything over forty-two inches needs a permanent.
Yeah.
So, code will have to be involved in some capacity. Forty-two something like a really weird height.
So, are we gonna do one ramp, one set of stairs?
That's what I was trying to find, and we were trying to figure out the price of those ramps.
The ramps are about forty grand. Fireball.
All right, the one on, um, central lab is, I think that's where it should be.
Well, yeah.
That would get most traffic on central lab.
People who are gonna walk up with north will walk down that.
Yeah, so that area where I had it kinda covered up.
Driveway, yeah.
I had that D covered up and it says potentially removed, that's why I showed that like green overlap path, I was assuming that is grass. So it's about forty thousand for both those, um, areas.
What about twenty thousand?
Yeah, yeah.
Cause that gray was gonna be potential stairs.
Yeah, that was the potential part we were saying.
I mean, stairs are eighty thousand apiece versus forty thousand for a.
Now, granted, I will say at eighty thousand, I am assuming that he's like, these are like double, three stairs that are pretty nice and, um.
Like, kinda what he shows in the north?
Yeah, yeah, like, we're, we're looking at a nice, I just don't want you guys to think we're spending eighty thousand dollars for like a crappy concrete thing that just has a steel rail on it, like, like, these are, these are gonna be pretty nice stairs. But the idea is you're ideally gonna have traffic going up and down both ways, most people don't feel comfortable, um, you don't wanna have to deal with ice issues or anything like that, right?
Yeah.
So we're thinking stairs on the north, have a ramp on the central.
Right, then you still have the, is that, is that gonna be a one-way deal, or is?
We'll have to figure that out.
Say currently, that's an outside arsenal project, I believe.
Right, I mean, I'm just imagining entering from north would be much easier than trying to get out of north.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think there should be an exit on your, on the avenue.
Expect as much from the city, they have something to say about that. I see it as being a safety light there, like, like right there, and gas station.
Well, it's only, we gotta remember that's, we'll have to negotiate that, cause that's only like half ours.
Right.
So.
I don't know, who uses it now, I've never seen it put down there.
It's access to the storage that's down there, and also part of it owned by, uh, Tiberian Potenties, this building.
I'm assuming.
Yeah, I was, I was on the, on that one building, uh, near the, near the, um, central lab, there's a, a concrete pad out from one of those buildings.
Yeah, down here, like.
I mean, is that gonna stay?
I, depends on their property or sheer, I bet you would have to. I think we can take it.
So I mean, that's gonna take a part of that drive through there.
Well, and the roads don't quite line up like this much, which was.
No, they don't.
This driveway comes out, and then this one's kinda, shows like curved in there, but it's not, it's like actually like they're offset almost, but, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think from central avenue, that should be like double width, so people can come in and out, you know, both directions.
That stuff we'll have to figure out in the detailed plans.
Yeah.
The good thing about removing that path on North Street is that you might still be able to do like a, just like a grass lane almost, that kinda goes up and just tapers down and follows with the hill, so it's like, okay, even though it's not really an official path, you can easily roll, you know, stroller or something down and just kinda follow the hillside.
That's what I'm saying, it's not like a winged steep hill. You could just go down the hill.
Soon by these contour lines, at the central lab side's gonna be a steeper slope.
I can't say that with confidence because I didn't draw these contour lines, I don't know where you got that.
Just knowing the property there, it, it's almost a, a broken up railway, a wall and.
It is. Yeah. Yeah, I, I, yeah, I'm, uh, likely to agree with you on that from what I've seen on the site, um.
Really, I don't know if this is the scale, like, that, that would be something that would, the scale I hear would be nice, this first four inch and.
So, the, the first thing, the first thing I'll do when I get the survey, that kinda pops up, is I'll recreate this on the sheet with some dimensions on it, which will be still a rough concept, but then that will evolve into like, okay, now we're gonna put hard dimensions and all of our callouts.
At least more skill.
Notes and details.
At least more skill, you know?
Yeah.
Know exactly what trees were putting in there.
That's what Charles was thinking of, move, actually move the hand over here, have you to walk place through you, that?
Yeah, I mean, that's easily doable, um, the only thing is, you guys, I know previously a big concern of yours was you had that, like, this was kinda your audience space, right?
Right, right.
So it's kinda like the opposite end.
Yeah. Well, it'll be doable.
Oh, yeah.
I'll show you what.
This chair will be those.
I've got a good drawer.
The seating over that tiered seating here. I already ordered.
Well, you can turn that any kind of way you want.
Right, right.
I mean, it turns the whole oval into art.
Yeah.
Actually. Or whatever, pattern you want.
Yeah, I heard the pad is, you wouldn't even have to have that grass, you could do that, maybe gravel around the pad.
Map the downtown area.
We gotta, gotta be careful, you're not gonna want gravel on the surface, cause when that water rises up, it's gonna wash the gravel.
Away, yeah, okay, all right.
Like, you put the, you put the gravel underneath and it basically creates a, I mean, it's like marbles in a jar. You wanna let pours, cause that's where the water's gonna sit, so it sinks away. Um, but with that in mind, we could do those, you know, paths like that without doing a hard concrete surface, that's really expensive, we could do just interlocking rocks that just kinda sit and outlines the path. You can walk across it easy enough and it doesn't break anything in water at all, just sinks right off it, runs off.
Like paper's gonna.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I would, I would probably do a little bit more spaced out, um, and you probably want the papers to be more natural, we're gonna want like nice designer papers because not that expensive.
Talking about the mole over top of them, so grass day.
Yeah, yeah.
I know Fred would be concerned about the maintenance issue.
Yeah, yeah, the idea is that, um, honestly, if you let the grass grow more than a couple inches, probably they'll seal.
Right, you have to be careful with that. If we make intricate paths in there, that might get harder to mow versus just a flat surface.
Actually, we build the shire, I'll move.
I still still out of mode.
Not from your house, you don't.
Well, I mean, it's like any part of whether it be.
I can't do much to, to deal with that at the moment, but I, I can say that as I, cause I'm, that's kinda my driving motor as far as all that, is the stormwater design and the, the actual, you know, all the prettiness, that'll be our landscape, our effects and stuff, I'll lay it out, but I'm more of a functional guy, so, um, but I'm confident enough that we could do something in this area to keep that from turning into a big mud pit.
Right, I mean, are we talking potential dry well or something of that sort?
Well, a, a lot of it will depend on what our infiltration tests look like, but, so I mean, if it shows that it drains very fast, we may, we can get away with a couple dry wells, but generally, since this is a flooding area, I mean, we're gonna want some, probably, I mean, that's why I think what the stormwater in here is like almost a hundred thousand. Yeah.
That did used to be a lake or a pond.
Yeah, exactly, and so we're, we're not trying to prevent it from flooding, but rather just ma- make it so that it's capable of handling the water
drainage.
without ruining everything, so I mean, think about pool, it'll, it'll fill up and then it'll drain, and then it'll fill up and then, but in the end, you know.
I mean, we're talking something that's similar to what's underneath the school, which, you don't own the school, but they rebuilt our elementary school, it's the same deal, it's raised up, but it has drainage throughout the grass that drains into tanks and.
Yeah.
Fills up.
And it basically just holds it for, it holds the water for a little while until it has enough time to, to get through it.
The last thing we wanna do is make those holes there more floodable, because we didn't do our due diligence.
No, no, yeah, I understand too, and the good thing is we have some extra storage space now, when, if, if we're not building that like retaining wall, we have these kinda smoking hills, now that's more area we can kinda use for capacity as we fill up.
Yeah.
Like maybe the bottom, like maybe the bottom of that would get filled up, but at least the hills will act as buffer, the water actually go into the hill.
Could we potentially do a small retention pond in that southwest corner where it stays wet anyway, or?
And, you're, you're not gonna wanna retention pond, cause it'll stay wet for most of the time, and then during the summer, and then into the fall, it's the season, and, yeah.
What is, what, what is that material that the, the track around the school is made out of? You know what I'm talking about?
It's like rubber.
Cause after it rains, I never see it wet.
Yeah, it's a, it's a permeable, it's a permeable surface, that's essentially what we're talking about here, just not quite as expensive.
Yeah, cause they've got like a rubber, uh.
Yeah, so the.
Cushion.
I mean, you could, you could actually get asphalt surface like of that, and you can pave it right over and you'll see these surfaces that have no drainage structures, no slope or anything, it's perfectly, but as soon as it rains, it drains right down. Problem is you need a lot of capacity or a really amazing infiltration rate to do that, like, I mean, those guys take off, they'll throw a bucket of water, that water will just go and just disappear, um, yeah, not.
Well, I, I think, uh, you know, for the rain that we get during summer or whatever, I'm sure your design would take care of that, but I mean, you know, if it flooded at the beginning of, middle of March, the beginning of April, I think we could just close the park off.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. You don't know what kinda snow we're getting, what kinda melting rain.
Right.
Yeah, you'll definitely have to do some sort of signage that just says, park isn't open under these conditions or something like that.
And I guess that's like one of the key, right, so, I mean, it is gonna flood, so whatever we put here as part of surfaces or whatever, it's gotta be able to be underwater. It's a pit, so it's not like.
Yeah, yeah, that's, so, so that's what I'm a little bit nervous about the electrical, I'm hoping that my, um, my electricians, you know, my electrical designers and my electrical engineers are gonna be able to say, hey, yeah, this is what we do. When they put conduit underground and it gets wet, so.
And it doesn't flood like every day, if, if it's gonna flood, we know it's gonna flood, so we can shut the power off or, you know, I think.
Yeah, ideally that, ideally we'll try to eliminate that, cause you don't want the one time someone forgets to shut it off and you have an issue, but, but like I said, I mean, they do power underground, they do it through water wells and stuff, it's, it's just a matter of me um, making sure that that is in our budget and I'm not paying, you know, twenty thousand dollars for every foot of, you know, brass copper or whatever.
Probably gonna like that.
We gotta have some streetlights, we have ocean sensors, streetlights.
There's lighting.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have ninety thousand dollars in here for lighting.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, that's a fair amount for this kinda small area, I mean, you think realistically, you had one light at each one of these corners that was a decent size, it probably lighted this whole park pretty wide.
Like those LED ones we put in the fair.
Yeah, I mean, what are you guys thinking for lighting, I mean, when I envisioned this, I, I was thinking that this is, like, you'll have some mild lighting along the paths and stuff, because if, if someone is in this area at night, they're probably walking through, they're not there because of something is particularly wild, unless the lights are artistic. And then maybe they, they're coming because the lights are nice.
So we, we'd like to light it up pretty good because of like seeing, it deters stuff from going on down there.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's the main thing.
Yeah, I definitely, I tend to agree, so, so that's what we're, we're gonna look, I mean, this is kinda in the middle of a public area, so we don't wanna create this like base, like, like illusion.
Stadium.
But we can, we can, the good thing about this being down in a pit is we can kinda tip those lights down.
Right.
And I think we can, but we'll do some, we'll plan on some general lighting for the whole area, and if we do some artistic lighting, it'll be, we'll keep it more minor, it will be the primary lighting sources.
Would that be on the ground also?
Uh, which one, the artistic lighting or the?
Whatever lighting.
Well, the artistic lighting could be anything, I, uh, I mean, the idea of something on the ground that just kinda pops up every once in a while and has like colored things kinda to see.
No, well, I was asking because, I mean, you're trying to electrify that pad, I mean, could you have overhead?
So you're talking about run the wire above rather than under?
Yeah.
Oh, should be out there.
So the only way, the only way I would run the wire above is if you guys put that pavilion in now, cause then you might connect it to it, and then it might be okay. But otherwise, if you're gonna want it underground, it's just kinda a high score.
Oh, yeah, that's why I asked about the lighting, the lighting was up to.
Well, how?
Well, even, even when, even when light is off, typically all the conduit will be underground, and it'll just connect underneath to each, each kinda lamp.
I have cheap solar spotlights in there, they come under motion. I'm sure there's more advanced ones for something of a commercial capacity, how good are they?
They're good. Solar panels come a long way in a lot of their stuff, um.
Yeah, it's really, I got one in my shed that is inside, but things outside works great.
Yeah, I mean, the more issue you might have is something on a smaller scale like this, um, winter time, when you get ice forms up in water.
Block something.
Yeah.
Winter time, it's gonna be closing up anyways.
Yeah, so maybe you don't have to worry about that.
Big village.
You know, I like, I like somebody, somebody, well, maybe we could do ice sculptures or something, that we can add or.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I've tracked it, I'm thinking.
Allow all the streets, so that anybody could step. And if it, if you've got some art, playing things or, um, even your paths and stuff, if you're plowing that, you don't really know where you're going, you don't wanna damage all that stuff up and make it look nasty next year. So unless you're gonna, unless you're really gonna go hard on winterizing this thing or staying on top of it, um.
I can't see that happening.
No.
Yeah, I mean, you'd have, you'd have to have markers for the, um, pathways, or you'd have to have someone keeping up on it as the storm goes, but you guys are gonna figure priorities, if you guys have something like that.
No, I could see the, you know, the, uh, lights you're saying that would pop up as, as you walk along, along the paths or along the stairway.
So I guess, did we get to where you never be?
I think so, yeah, I just, um, I'll write up a, a short thing that just says, hey, this is what we talked about, this is what we agreed on, and just like before, if I could just get something that says, yep, they've got our thumbs up, we're gonna do this, and we'll go from there. So hopefully, we'll, I, like I said, the, um, the easements, um, I just got the email from my guy on the way up here, so I'm hoping that I'll, I'll look at that tomorrow, and as long as I don't have any issue with it, you know, I'll send that along to you guys, and hopefully finally.
Okay.
I'll just take that to this. Yeah, so, um, and then yeah, I mean, the bathroom is kinda starting.
Yeah, I mean, uh, anybody see that, this is a preliminary design of the bathroom for Mark Park.
We got the budgets and everything settled.
Is that the same bookcase the existing one or is this?
That's what I thought.
This one's bigger.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
So you're taking everything out from that old, like, foundation and all that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so we, we had talked about trying to keep the walls and the foundation at one point, but with the existing typing and everything that's there, by the time you're done cutting up and removing all that stuff, there's almost no foundation left there anyway. It doesn't seem worth it.
Yeah, it looked like it was a bigger footprint than what we have.
Yeah, well, we knew it was gonna have to be a little bit bigger for no other reason, just to meet code requirements or, you know, wheelchair, wheelchair turning space and, and all that stuff, so. Um, but ideally, it will essentially be the, the same location.
Right.
Yeah, it's a good central location.
So that's where we're at on that. Other than that, I think everything else pretty much squared away, moving.
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying, as I tried to tell you guys before, it's, this is gonna be the kinda time where it's like dull and slow going because it's just us processing stuff, like, we're, we're taking things from this to, essentially from, you know, this to more longer lines of this, you know, that, it just takes some time to get all that done.
A little off topic, did, did we get the right away, squared away from the sewer part of the court street lot?
That's what I was just talking about.
Yeah, the easements, yeah.
Okay.
So we find, I finally managed to get, um, and I can't remember his name, save my life, Terry, Tracy?
Tracy.
Tracy, yeah. I, I, me and Tracy have been kinda going back and forth about it for a while, and we finally kinda laid out that sewer where it needed to be, and then I got my survey. Did the last little bit, it was like in the corner, um, and, and so from there, like I said, I just got the mapping, that should be the final easement, we'll send that to you, um, to you guys, and share it with your lawyer, and he will talk to.
He will lawyer it all up.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, south side waters.
That's all squared away, we've been, we've been all wrapped up with that, it's just a matter of trying to get something else to bid with because we don't wanna bid like a small little, we can avoid it, um. Ideally, I would like to bid that with, um, probably the first two parking lots, which would be, again, ideally Hyde Lot and the county lot, because the county lot would give us ahead for the, um, uh, for the charging stations of the Hyde Lot, um, but that, it kind of has to hold up until someone talks to the bank again.
Oh, yeah, we didn't, we didn't do that.
That's what questions were.
Yeah, I don't know if it's happened or not.
I don't know. Like I said, I'm, I'm more than willing to do that on your guys' behalf, same kind of issues I had before. It's, you guys might be able to sway that a little easier than a cold call from.
They have a new scenario.
Yeah, I don't know who you are, but we're not giving you our concrete, get away.
Yeah, yeah, we should figure that out.
That's the only one I can think of that, we're kind of weird.
Right.
Yeah, no, the rest of it is pretty well, well worked away. I do, I'm surprised that I haven't heard back from the skate park designers yet.
Somebody asked about around the Hyde Lot. The chief asked about this. Um, so like the back corner of that Hyde Lot, it's like borders the police station. Is there a way to put like some kind of a staircase in there?
Have to look at it in.
Not like a hundred thousand dollar staircase, but like a.
So we were the police could get down there.
Something.
Well, I mean, um,
Fireman.
Staircases generally aren't in the realm of impossible, so.
Right. Cause they were thinking about having, we're running the capacity of the parking lot, but if we could kind of.
Yeah, so what I'll do is as soon as we get that, that kind of preliminary drawing queue as far as the, um, number of parking spaces and laid out, we'll try to rough in an area for that for you guys to comment on and say, yeah, that'd be good. But yeah, if you had a simple concrete stairway with just a rail, it's.
Right.
Not gonna be an issue.
Okay. I don't know where the budgets are at with those projects.
Well, I can tell you that, so for, I volunteer for CBSA and we just got, um, I was, I've been running through some projects with them for trying to get contractor. And they have a number of maintenance, um, a French drain flooding issue around the building. And, uh, spreading the parking lot and doing a concrete stairs case and that would be twelve grand. So, I mean, and that's, and that also has a small retainer for miscellaneous repair items around the building. So I guess it's pretty cheap to, if you're just looking for a pure access concrete staircase.
Nothing fancy.
Some real guy, kind of technique, wanna do a radio whenever you do about the skating park. Didn't touch it, cause I don't know enough about it. Yep, man, the CEO, um, never see you.
It's all about the culture, man, those guys will be hyped up over that skate park grave until today, they got that written.
I am not the guy, I've never stayed skating.
Yeah, I, I've even had a bunch of people like email me still and ask me about some of that stuff. Just kind of like, we're, we're in the process, I know you're patient, but keep in mind this, at the very earliest, it'll be next year, like.
Yeah, so are, are we gonna be able to get any of the projects out to bid in the spring?
Oh, ideally, I'm gonna have at least a handful of them out for the winter would be ideal.
Okay.
And then we'll get a couple of them under construction during the spring and then we'll bid in like through the winter and the spring, we'll get a couple more during the summer. I mean, fingers crossed.
We're looking for next construction season, so.
Yeah.
April, April, hopefully there's employees who prices are down by then, hopefully.
Yeah, no problem. Um, I mean, the good thing is if you can pack this a lot of these together, you'll get a better price, like, general contractor comes in and he can handle a lot of this piece out of it, if it here and there and take this, this time. And you're not, you're not talking, the good thing about this is there's a lot of moving parts, a lot of smaller projects with all of this, but nothing is particularly complex. We're not building the entire, it's a handful of parks.
We go a middle of the art park. Paris of the East.
You're like, no, that goes through with the next, uh, next board.
You gotta tell me for all people.
I don't want them too big for the ground in there.
No, you just get one of the, just like, uh, what are you talking about, you could just pull a cord up and it's just like a cordial style or just set it right up and take it down everywhere. It's a million dollar idea. Like I said, I believe I've got everything, you know, like I said, I'm, I'm here, so I'm happy to talk about any of the other projects or parts of it, if anything you didn't get. If you guys think of anything on your way out the door, we'll get a receipt from me, I should have all my emails at this point.
So does anybody online have anything? I see Laura's.
I have a question, um, what portion of the budget is committed to art or the art park?
Currently?
Or did I just? So without that pavilion, there's a hard thousand dollars.
So the idea is, um, uh, shoot, I don't have the, the budget spread in front of me, I can email that to you before, but I know that when me and, um, me and Julie and Brittany and, um, Mike had looked through it before, there was a little bit somewhere around twenty five thousand, I wanna say, with, that was kind of a buffer, um, when we still had the pavilion in there, um, but without the pavilion and we also have a thirty percent contingency, we're being pretty hard on that. So the idea is that we're going to take a lot of that money and use these same features and apply like artistic sweat, you can't really see me at all, so it's like probably talking to it. Um, trying to add, um, artistic flares on a lot of the things that are there. So while we don't really have in our budget, we're expecting the price of a lot of the things that we have in there to be more expensive because we're not just gonna get benches, we're gonna get artistic benches, we're not just gonna, um, you know, throw down concrete, we're gonna do concrete with a pattern or color or painting of some sort. That's trying to really get the, the most out of our, our money as far as the functionality and the artistic features that are gonna be unique to the park.
I can feel that we're, we should definitely not have the concrete pad of the pavilion area, that's a hundred thousand dollars for a, a pad of concrete where, um.
So the hundred thousand dollars was the structure that is not there anymore.
Okay, and the concrete pad?
Will be significantly cheaper if you, uh, I mean, Draper Park, we're, we did something similar there and I think the whole budget for Draper Park was like fifteen thousand.
I was gonna say twenty, but yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, we're, we're really just talking about, um, a hard surface is all.
But it's still a square shape, there's nothing, there's nothing artistic about it and there's no plans to have any real events because we don't have a, you know.
There's, there's no reason that that can't be an artistic pad, there's no reason that can't be a map of a wego, a lot of cool stuff laid out on it. There's no reason that pad can't be, that's what I'm talking about, like, okay, maybe the pad starts out at ten thousand, but that thirty percent contingency puts in another five grand in it to make it a, a funky shape with a cool picture on it or something like that, that's where you gotta get it. But tho- those artistic features and stuff, the detail that you want to see the artistic, that can't really come until later in the project, once we start getting, you know, everything down on paper. I guess I'm asking for a little trust for me that I, I am gonna make this an art park. I'm keeping that in mind.
Do you wanna take this with you?
No, I have one.
Oh, I, I have two on that one.
With this rendering.
Oh, yes, yeah, that would be great, thank you.
I just feel that the, um.
And right in the middle.
Yep.
The numbers are off, uh, you know, for a million dollar park, if we're only talking about having twenty five thousand dollars right now committed to art, that's not the goal of what we're trying to do here with having an interactive art park. And, and we really.
What I'm saying is that.
Having things be, you know, art in, in the design, in the forward thinking of it, instead of it, the later thought that, you know, after all the money's all spent, that, you know, somehow we're just gonna have, you know, just something for free or something and, and we should be devoting more of our, setup time into having the art that we, you know, picking up what the art is, if we're going to have one sculpture or three sculptures in those spots. And, or, you know, are we, are we going to commit to a hardscape design or do we want three D art? Or, like, what is the interactive art part that we want to feature first and then design around that? Um, like, you have the three spots shown on the path. And it's, it's, I like the, the circular O and I think that's a great design. And then having the three sculpture areas is very nice, but maybe we oughta think about, uh, what's gonna go on those first, uh, so that there is something that we're looking at, um, you know, like,
yeah.
Uh, really deciding on what the, what kind of art, if it's, if it's hardscape art or if it's three D art, um.
So Laura, did you have a chance to look at through the artistic features package that was submitted previously?
Sure I did, yeah.
And so, so that doesn't meet what you think is, um, what we're trying to reach here with this?
Well, I thought it looked like a whole bunch of pretty pictures that never made it into our design.
Well, the design hasn't been done yet.
Yeah.
That's that, yeah, so that, that is what it is, we show you like, look at, these are the benches and stuff we're gonna try to pick out, these are the artistic things we're gonna try to tie in. But none of that really gets shown until we have a final materials plan that says, okay, these are the exact benches we're gonna do. The podium style, this is the exact detail. Like, right now, we're not gonna spend, you know, I mean, for example, we've already spent however many months even before I came on, just trying to get a general concept going. Um, like I said, I've been actively engaged with the, you know, art committee and, you know, with the steering committees that you guys hear, I've listened to what you guys have kind of gone here. You can't think of about the art separate from the use of the place because, like, for example, it's not twenty five thousand dollars that we have on art. It's the cost of the benches plus a little bit more, it's the cost of the concrete pad plus a little bit more. Those will all be artistic features. Nothing in this park, if I have my way about it, is going to be just, just a tree, just a, a light post, just a, a concrete pad. The idea is that we're gonna bring some uniqueness to that and that's where, that's why we have a thirty percent contingency, I mean, one point four million dollars, anybody wanna pull their calculator out quick and remind me what thirty percent of that is? I mean, so that, that's kind of the.
Two hundred and twenty thousand.
Yeah, so I mean, plus the hundred thousand, plus, you know, the twenty five extra buffer that we kind of had in there. We are going to be incorporating those artistic features. Um, the thing we're trying to balance here is we wanna make sure that we don't spend six hundred thousand dollars on our artistic stuff that is only access, only accessible two months out of the year.
For instance, what would be accessible two months out of the year?
Well, my big thing is, I mean, we only have so much money and step one is we have to make a usable park. Step two is we have to put stuff in the park. So, I mean, we only have a million dollars to make a park.
Yeah, we only did step one.
Right now, we gotta complete step one is to make the park.
Of the infrastructure is the expensive part.
Yeah, I mean, the.
Yeah, so that, I guess that's what I'm saying about making it usable more throughout the year rather than just one or two months. Like, in order for people to get down there most of the year without, you know, short of snow and, you know, heavy rain, you need stairs, you need pathways, you need parking, you need, tho- those are all things we, we have to do. And then, and then the idea is, you know, we're gonna give them some pathways and some benches and we're gonna make those artistic features, we're gonna make those interactive, you know, design pieces. And I know that those stuff that we just sent you is, you know, just pretty pictures and stuff, but that's the, that's the step one to getting out to what you, what you're gonna be picking out. Now that we have this down and we're kind of locked into what we're doing, that's where I can start bringing in the art committee and, you know, my architects and get some conversations to go, okay, you know, what vendor are we gonna pick these benches out from, okay? How much are they actually gonna cost, what's the final thing, and then we kind of start to refine that budget a little bit more.
It's like setting up your Christmas tree, you gotta put the tree up first, the ornaments come later. And there's so many different varieties of ornaments, you could have many splendid Christmas trees.
I see that you could, um, possibly have the art be the feature, uh, and, and not like some idea that somebody's gonna have every once in a while have a concert or like, you know, the, the idea that there, we're gonna have concerts and fairs and, and things down in there, that's more of a, what? Performance. Days out of a year that we might ever have anything go on in there, so why would we spend so much money on a pad or a performance space when the park for hundred and sixty five days a year will be used for the purpose of the art park and the recreation?
Uh, I can tell you right now, significantly more amount of the budget being spent on art and design for the art part, part of it than there is for, the pad we're talking about is between ten and twenty five thousand dollars. We just told you there's at least a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars for specific art type of features, like, like the eye.
It's a big concrete pad or something, makes it useful, cause then you can pull a trailer in there, you can set up a Marvin. You can set up an art show, I don't, you can do a lot of stuff on a concrete pad.
A lot of concrete paths, other areas and parks, um, you know, there's one in Marvin Park. Um, and that, for that purpose and the art park can be used for the art purpose.
I've talked to the Tabor County Arts Council, they are very willing to look for grants for us on our behalf for this art park, they know that there's limited funds right now for that.
No, it needs to be a usable park for people to live downtown, not if, not. The idea that, 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 uh, there are people that can take their children over to the, um, schools over by, uh, the other side of town or, or go to Marvin Park or go to Hickory's or whatever, there's people that live downtown that need to be able to use a park. So it's just not something to look at.
We look forward to doing a concert, we need the pad for instruments and whatever. If we use it to put, perform a play, schools like to put on plays, they wanna perform a play, we need the pad. But, uh, as a stage, we need, we need a staging area, that stage can be used for many different things. That's what the pad is. I mean, if you wanna use a different word, stage.
Artists get it, that's the biggest problem.
Yeah.
Your opinion, art is different than mine, different than his, I mean, yes, the hard part.
Well, we all start out with a basic and we build upon that artistically.
Like I said, I mean, the goal of the park originally is just to draw a lot more people to North Ave. Because right now, like you said, Laura, there's a billion places, there's Draper Park, there's Marish Park, there's, um, Lake Street, you know, in between the buildings, there's, but that's all downtown in one specific spot. The point is to beautify North Ave and a wego coming in from that direction. So that's where this park, and that's why we wanna have a place there to, to hold events, so that something was on there during February fest. Push it down there for the merchants down North Ave. Am I wrong?
That will be more.
It'll be on Lake Street now.
I can imagine all those trees in this rendering here covering Christmas lights during Christmas, right? That's a, an eye catcher right there. I mean, this doesn't even have to be occupied, I mean, if you wanna do something with it, when, when there's just snow in it, the people can't go in there. We see a little, it's like, ooh, there's just not a hole in the ground with snow, there's lights, this park. Something to look at.
Just at the wave finding meeting a couple of days ago, some of the gateway signs, like these art park signs, they can really do nice and they're not awfully expensive.
Right.
It'd be a great pop if we choose to go that way, I mean, obviously, it's already a company we have kind of here, it's already done design work. It would meld in with the rest of the signage in the village, just the thought, I mean, it's kind of almost like. Just the thought, I mean, it's kind of almost like an epiphany moment when I saw some of the stuff they presented, but it's beautiful stuff.
I mean, we have it there now, we could use it for a Halloween theme.
Yeah. I said the, the, the fire department, police department, EMS, they have programs for the kids, they can have it there, sit it on the street.
That would make sense, that's a great idea for him because that way you're not blocking up streets, it's a lot safer.
It's all good, yeah, it's cool, trunk and treat, you take the truck out, you got the area.
Get over there, I don't want anybody driving vehicles and like. We're not doing it, we take the truck out. A bunch of vehicles parked in hell, or it's like, oh, destroy all the stormwater and all.
We're at the Maser trucks now.
Yeah, no, this, this project has definitely been a hard, long path, but I, I do believe that we're at a what I believe was a pretty unachievable happy medium at the moment, where we're trying to master functionality while leaving plenty of flexibility for artistic embellishment, artistic features, so that this space is not just I know on the concept, it looks like a, just a generic park from, you know, any random thing, but trust me, the art, the arts guys are gonna do their thing. I mean, that's, gotta trust the process to that, so.
Well, I guess my point is we gotta get a layout that we all agree on, so you can get us a real budget, so that we know how much money is actually left over to buy sculptures and.
Yes, I agree, that's the.
Yeah, I think we've come up with a basic design.
And Alon's done, Alon's kind of like here in the headlights at this point, they're like, they can't believe they're actually like basically done, they're like, what do you mean, everything's good, we're just, all right, well, I'll check in with you again. All right, again, still nothing, are you sure? Okay. I mean, now that, now that they've done their concepts, they're really just the support, like they're, like, we're gonna design the sites and everything, they'll, they'll call out the flowers and the paintings. They'll help us with the artistic features, so you'll see them again, you know, when we start, you know, I gotta buy and sell, we're bringing the arts community back in to, to chip in on that. I think, I think we've got a good, a good course ahead of us now that this, these hurdles have been, have been dealt.
Anybody else, do you have anything else? Laura, you good? Well, Laura, do you agree on the overall layout of what we talked about as far as stuff we talked about tonight as far as one ramp off Central Ave, no ramp off North Ave. No pavilion. I guess we could take a quick vote on that. Rob?
Yes.
Brian?
Our basic design, yes.
John, with those improvements, yeah. Laura?
Can you say that again, there is one ramp from, uh, coming down from the Central Ave site. The North Ave site will have the stairs and then the people will use the driveway as a ramp.
Yep.
What were the other two things?
Uh, there'll be no pavilion.
No pavilion?
No, like pavilion structure, there might be like a concrete pad or something, but no actual structure.
No covering structure, okay, and then what was the third thing?
Those are it.
Okay, I, yes, I agree to those.
Okay, and yes, so everybody agrees on that, so. Thanks, Al.
Uh, Laura? Don't think that this has to be the, uh, the end of this, if you have, um, ideas for the art park or anything like that, that you think you wanna like shoot them to me, I'll get them tied in. Without any ideas, I'm just gonna trust my fancy people because I don't do that, so. But any, anything you guys give, um, you know, comment on the stuff that the art committee has already provided us. Yeah, and keep in mind, that was provided by the, your guys' art committee, not me, so, um, well, I guess I contributed a little bit, like did some fancy Google. But I'll catch up with you guys, please, and like I said, you guys all have my email as well, if I'm willing to give you any questions.
Appreciate your patience.
Thank you, guys.
Make sure what you're doing on that. See you in another, two weeks or so.
Two weeks, we're gonna, we're gonna.